Ladies and gentlemen, it is six o'clock and I would like to call this meeting to order. If you would please stand to join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please, Connie.
Chris Wachowski, here. Terry Lowery.
Here.
Kyle Travis.
Here.
Jeff Shaw.
Here.
Dave Darga.
Here.
Jordan Gallagher.
Here.
Connie Preston, here.
Thank you. Item four, Declaration of Conflict of Interest. If there's any board member that sees any potential conflict of interest, now would be the time to declare it. Alrighty, seeing none, I'd like to move on to public comment. It is still six o'clock. I'd like to open public comment. Please direct your comment directly to the board. You have three minutes. If you don't mind giving us your name and address, that would be great. So I'd like to open it up this time. Any public comment? Linda, come on up. May I have you come right up to the microphone, right up here?
Excuse me. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
I'm Linda Fletcher. I'm at 12090 Southwest Bay Shore Drive, Travis City, Michigan. And I'd like to talk to you today about an issue dear to my heart. Let me tell you a little bit about who I am first. As I said, I'm Linda Fletcher. I'm a retired United States Army Lieutenant Colonel from the Nurse Corps. Have a master's in trauma nursing. And I have ten years of independent study of PTSD, after which I presented a TED Talk on PTSD in 2015. And I am a licensed gun owner. So, where do I live? Well, I live on a hill overlooking Cedar Lake. And I can see both sides of Cedar Lake. It's fabulous. And why I'm here is because one night in late June, I was having a dinner party on my deck. And it was a lovely evening. The lake was full of boats and kids. And I had everybody there on the deck. And suddenly, in the midst of all of this pleasantry, there was a series of gunshots that were emanating from across the lake. And this is not something that doesn't, I mean, it's not unusual to see it and have that happen at my house. It happens occasionally. Usually starts around May or June, and it gets more frequent as deer season approaches. Well, the result of that was that I had to move my party inside. And that was no fun. And it really destroyed the ambiance, I can tell you that for sure. But the really important thing is that all of the people in the boats and all the kids evacuated. I mean, they just disappeared from the lake instantly because they were afraid. Well, I began to wonder about that and think about it, about what impact this event might have on those kids. And they're already traumatized by the school shootings and multiple school shootings that we have, and all of the drills that they have when they go back to school about how to protect yourself if somebody comes in and tries to blow you up, you know, blow you all up. So this event and the possible trauma to these kids prompted me to explore what legal support I might be able to, might be available. So I called the Elmwood Township and I called the Leland, the Elmwood Police and the Leland Police. And I coned the township, the county, and the state laws. And I found no restrictions anywhere, all the way up and down, for the discharging of firearms in an urban area.
Linda, I'm sorry to interrupt, but that's your three minutes. So, as I told you, you're welcome to send me an email and we can be in contact with it. And I'll share that with the board as well. And there's three minutes at the end of the meeting as well, if you'd like to stick around for the meeting and you can continue.
Okay. I just have about a minute left to go, so.
Thank you.
All right. Sorry.
No, you're good. Thank you. Any other public comment at this time? Okay, seeing none. It's 6:05. I'd like to close public comment. Move on to the consent calendar. The purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with in one board motion without discussion. Any member of the public, board, or staff may ask that any item of the consent calendar be removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. We have department reports this evening, treasurer, planning, zoning, fire report, I think, was included on the table. Harbor master report, post audit invoices, 81623 through 83123. We have committee reports from Parks and Rec for 82423 and minutes from our 81423 meeting. Would any member of the public like anything removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda? Any member of staff or any board member? Okay. Seeing none, I'd look for a motion.
I move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Under agenda approval, I would like to add, under item 10B, also building location. Any other changes? Okay, I'd look for a motion.
Motion to approve with the addition to 10B.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Moving on to reports. 8A supervisor's remarks. You've got my remarks. I did get a price Friday from Garfield for those tanks for Timberly. They were, for the two tanks, $22,500. I have passed that along to our engineers and they're going to be calculating prices for us using that number. Also, Parks and Rec Committee is looking for a board member to serve on Parks and Rec, Kyle. Oh, did I say Kyle? So, if board members would like to think about that and consider that, Kyle. So, anybody have questions for me about supervisor remarks? Okay, trustee remarks. Any trustee remarks? All right, engineers report. Ken, do you have anything for us before your agenda item? Okay, great. Other officer remarks. Rookie had to have his CAS or his splint changed or something, so he's not going to be here tonight to talk. Pete, you got anything for us at this point?
None at this point.
Okay. Communications from the clerk?
I placed in your packet just a copy of the risk reduction grant application for the security cameras that was submitted. I think it was the end of the month was the deadline. And the recreation grant progress report for the discovery, Pierre, just for your information.
Carl did a great job on that application, so hopefully we'll get some money for those cameras. Item nine, there's no old business. Moving on to item 10, 10A water, Timberly water update. Ken?
Good evening. Ken Schwert with Wade Trim. As Supervisor Shaw mentioned in his report, we just got a cost from Garfield Township on Friday for those tanks. So, it is, it doesn't sound unreasonable for those tanks. Those tanks new are $80,000, $90,000. So that's a very reasonable cost. One item we don't know is if there's other costs that may go along with that. Just for the removal of the tank, you know, what does that cost include? Is it, is that just the physical tank itself, or does that include any of the patching up of the building we take it out of? So I think there's still a few items we got to hash out on that cost before I can give you any real update on the numbers. That's kind of my update for now. I wish I had a little bit more, but it came in kind of late.
And if you saw in the supervisor's report, we are doing a meeting with the Timberly water users two weeks from tonight here at 6:00 PM. So, guys are welcome to join me for that if you'd like. So, Ken's going to be here. John Devozzo is going to be here.
What time's that mean, six?
Six o'clock, two weeks from now. So, any questions for Ken on the Timberly water? I know we don't have a lot for you, but I bugged Garfield Township like you can't believe to get him to give me a price, so.
It's $22,500 for both tanks.
Both, yeah. Twenty-two, five total. So. 10B Marina Phase Three cost updates and building location. Ken, you want to start or you want me to?
I'll let you start.
Okay, so, so there's been a lot of public input about, about obviously the cost of Phase Three, about the location of the building. You know, Kyle had talked about that months ago, brought it up. Dave's talked about that. So, Ken Schwert and I and Pete met last Fri- Thursday, Friday, something like that, at the, at the marina. We walked around, we looked at options. You know, Pete brought up the fact that by storing boats on that south wall, that's become a good profit for us. If we leave the building where it currently is on the plan, we lose that opportunity. So, I posed a question to Ken, what would that look like? First thing he said was, we could probably save a bunch of money by doing that. So, we talked about it, and I think I can speak for the three of us, or at least Pete and I, that I think it's a really good idea for us to kind of pull back just a second and see if putting the new building where the old buildings currently are makes more sense. And from a cost standpoint, from a cost standpoint, it seems like maybe it does. So, Ken, I'll let you kind of take it from there.
Yeah, so it just has more questions came in. We just started, we started thinking, is the utility of the site changing too much with the new plan? You know, we're taking the pedestrians and putting them all along the waterfront, which is where the boats store, which is where people unload their cars to take the stuff out to the boats. Now granted, that, that initial layout that we put together and designed, that was from the, that long public process that you had, you know, ten years ago, whenever that started. But it just in reality, right now, I'm not sure it's the right fit with all the questions that are coming in. So, so when we brought up, it's just, it might be worth exploring. The cost savings, if the building is set back off the immediate waterfront, is, is the raising of the wall necessary at that point? You're, you're no longer, you have a much wider space to protect the building. You're not directly at the waterfront. So there may, that's a significant cost savings by not raising that seawall. If the parking lot pretty much remains where it is, you may not necessarily have to redo the entire parking lot, rip it all out and put it back in. You may be able to do an overlay. So there's, there could be some things we could look at. But before we get too far down that road, we kind of want to look at, make sure it does, will it work? Will it give us the parking we need? Will it tie into the rest of the marina adequately? You know, there's, there's features, the phases one and two we did are, are just, they're beautiful. We don't want to, we want to make sure if we're going to spend money on it, let's do it right. Let's try to make it mesh in. And I think that just takes some look, looking at it, laying out on the site, see what will work in the existing space.
Sarah Clarin has a call in with Waterways to make sure it's not going to affect our funding if we do that, or to find out how it would affect our funding. We certainly don't want to lose that opportunity. At least if we know how it affects that, we can compare how much we can save and how much we would lose if we lose any. And then we can make an educated decision on that. So.
One last comment on that is, this has not been discussed at all with Ray Kendra, the architect. So that'll be a discussion once he's back.
Yeah, he's out of the country currently for the week. So. So do you guys have questions about that? I know we're kind of shifting gears a little bit, but it just seems like the right thing to do. Anybody have any opposition to us doing that, or do we just say, let's, let's let our, our engineers give us some costs on doing that, and if it's possibility and what the options are, and we'll keep moving? Sound good? Everybody good with that?
So what we would do is kind of like what I gave to you for this meeting, for the revised changes, it'd be something similar to that with a schematic layout and some cost.
Okay, great. Appreciate you doing that, Ken. If we are done with that item, if anybody else, if nobody has anything else, we're going to move right on to Bree Creek Parking Lot. Ken, I'll let you take it.
All right. So we had a, our bid opening last week. We, you know, it's, it's a tough time to bid any project in the fall. Everybody's really busy. We had very limited response to the bid. A couple of questions and we only received one bid on it. The bid came in higher than our estimate. And honestly, because it's one bid, I'm not sure who's right. You know, there's nothing to compare it to. The, the total bid price was $522,804. That is for the complete project we put together. That's cleaning out of the stormwater basins, that's patching up the pavement areas that are extremely bad, and removing the foundations and old building pieces that were initially constructed, the foundations that were put in but never built on. That would fully utilize the BLIGHT grant funding that we have. The, the one bidder was Walton Contracting. Their bid was complete. They, they did have a couple of math errors on it. I noted that in my write-up. That's, that's important when there's multiple bidders, because you have to assess them in a very specific way. There's only one bid, so if there's a math error, they have the choice, they can withdraw their bid, or because there's only one, we said, we let them correct it because it was an obvious math error and, and presented it to you. So that, that's why it was noted in there. You say it's important if there's multiple bidders, but because there's just one, we would be starting all over again if he would withdraw his bid because of a math error.
So did we get that? Yeah, we didn't get that, Ken, because you were working on the final details of it. Okay, thank you.
Was the math there in our favor or their favor?
Thank you.
It was, there was actually multiple. The bigger one was in their favor.
They forgot a couple of zeros.
They forgot a.
Yeah.
So what was our original thought number, 40 or something like that?
It was, our actual construction cost was $382,000. So the, the number that we, I, hopefully I didn't confuse anybody with, when I was talking before, the total project cost, I was trying to incorporate the total cost to you guys with engineering and contingencies, what to plan for, for cost. The actual construction cost we had estimated was $382,000. So this bid is, you know, it's significantly higher.
So our options are, we either accept this one, or we say we're going to put it back out to bid this winter?
Correct.
Is that?
Yep. Yep. So if we put it out, back out to bid, there's, we did have contractors that basically said, if you guys wait till next year, we'll, we'll put a bid on it. But they definitely weren't going to look at it for anything happening immediately. So we might get more bids, but we might not. It's still a pretty, pretty tough to get contractors to respond.
What are, and it's tough to predict, but like for a long time, like asphalt was just constantly trending up. And basically, the longer you waited, the more, are we still in that situation?
Um, it, it is hard to tell. It's, it's a, it's a horrible time to be estimating projects on our part right now. We are never right right now, unfortunately. Costs can be very skewed. And a lot of it will just depend on how busy somebody is. They will throw an outrageous number because they're going to, they're, they're so busy right now they can do that.
So speaking of the asphalt, so their asphalt cost is very high here because they actually have to buy it? Is that correct? So, so they don't, so they actually have Elmer's do their, their.
There's, there's really only one asphalt game in town now.
And that's Elmer's?
Yeah.
Yeah, so. Not to, so potentially, I'll just say it. So if potentially Elmer's bid on it, it may be cheaper because they're not buying asphalt from somebody who's the ones that make it.
Yeah.
It's like buying it from the producer. So, because I know they, they've got this, their asphalt is more expensive than the current going rate.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, Terry?
So how many weeks do the, do they estimate it takes to do the job? If, if they were to get the bid, or if we were to delay the bid till spring? Like, is it a four-week project? Is it a two-week project?
We, we put it as a, as a 45 days.
Forty-five days.
Forty-five days. So it's basically five weeks.
So you could do it in the spring before the season gets busy, if we bid it for that timeframe?
Yes, you could do that. Certainly the asphalt can't happen until it warms up sometime in May, hopefully. But yeah, that's, that's how it would work. The portions of this project are excellent winter work. The removal of the sediment from the basins, that would be much better to do sooner than, you know, you don't want to wait till spring thaw and everything's a, water's high. So winter work would be fine for some of the portions of this. But it could certainly be done in the springtime before, before the season gets busy. The one thing to think about if, if we do go to springtime is, I haven't gotten clarification that the BLIGHT grant could be extended. Certainly, we can look into it. We can work with the, the program manager to see. It wasn't a clear no, it's just that we got to look into it more to see how it works.
Right, and that's $57,000. Yeah, Dave?
I would like to see a rebid, but with the possibility that they could do the drain systems and things through the winter time that they could do if we award the contract in, say, November or December. And then the finish time would be spring. So that would give more flexibility to the contractors.
Definitely would.
It'd help a lot for them.
So from a timing standpoint, is that something, like, you were thinking we would bid it out later in the season, right? Like, winter time? I mean, if we were going to rebid it?
You know, if you're, by, by November, these guys are pulling off of sites, except for winter work.
That's what I'm looking at.
Yeah, yeah. So we could rebid it about that time period.
Okay.
And they could get in there still probably.
Depending on the weather.
If they know that they're going to have a job, because they're going to slow down, they can, they can keep working at will, basically, so you can get better jobs. And this asphalt's cheaper in the spring. Right now, it's a premium because they're trying to finish up jobs. In the spring, they're just trying to get rolling.
Okay.
And we could kind of put a finish date by like Memorial Day or something like that, couldn't we? So, so give them six weeks or more after the frost.
It is weather dependent, but if they get in there and do some stuff this fall, and they can prep the land, it's just a matter of temperature for the asphalt then. So they're already, you know, and you're right, Labor Day would be a good target time. Our Memorial Day would be a good target.
Yeah, we can, we can, that's very common with contracts. You can have a, a specific completion date and then have them, they can start and stop their contract time as what allows.
And have people available.
I think we'll get several bids at that point.
So I guess the big thing hanging out there is that grant.
If you save.
What's the grant, 50,000?
Fifty-seven.
Well, if the bid is less than $140,000.
Difference, yeah.
Difference in the estimate there. If we can knock that down to 100, we're still ahead.
But, you know, just check on the grant.
Well, we're working on that with John Gallagher.
Yeah. And, and the reason we're, we're so late in the season is we, it took a long time to get our EGO permit to do this. So it's, it's not, we weren't dragging our feet on this. So we have good reasoning behind the timing.
Exactly. That's true. That's not going to go away if we are a little late?
Not, not the EGO permit, that is fine.
So if we want to rebid it, but then we find out the grant won't be extended, will we need to have a special meeting back here and reconsider that original bid?
I don't, do you know when?
Because they're usually, does it, does this have a date on it that it's good through?
It, it does. I don't remember exactly what that date is, whether it's 30 or 60 days. But there is a period of time for us to review it and discuss.
And we don't know when the BLIGHT eliminating, elimination grant expires, if you want to call it that?
We have to have our final reimbursement request in by the end of the year.
Okay. Okay. So, Ken and I will work on finding that out for sure. As far as the BLIGHT elimination grant goes. So, do we want to motion not to accept this bid and to rebid it?
Yes, yes.
Do you want to do that, Dave?
I'd make a motion that we do not accept this bid at this point and rebid the process with the recommendations that I outlined.
We have a motion and support. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you, Ken. Thanks for the work and we'll work toward figuring that stuff out.
Sounds good.
Thank you. 10D Marina Winter Storage Rates. Pete, you want to come up? I think we all have the stuff that, that, those costs or those prices that you gave us. So everybody's seen the comparable prices. I know we talked about this last month about looking at these. What's everybody's thoughts? Okay, well, I'll start. So, so a 20 to 30-foot boat, the average cost is $459, according to your numbers. Okay. Is that net income?
Yeah.
That's their, their cost, correct?
Yeah, that's what they're writing a check for on average.
That's what they're writing a check for. Okay. So for example, if we went up to $2 a square foot, it would go to $573.75. That's $114 more. For the over 40-foot boats, that would be $297 more if we went to $2. I'm just using that as an example. You know, we're at $1.60. It's been that way since?
Before 2005.
Okay. So I do think we need to go up. I, it's hard to get comparables that are apples to apples and oranges to oranges based on all the different things. But I, the other thing is municipalities, we shouldn't be below the cost of private organizations. So we certainly don't want to be below most. And it is incredibly convenient for people to be able to store there. So, what's everybody's thoughts?
Didn't we have some other lifetime, too? I remember like a 185 and a 195. There were a couple others that aren't on this list. Is that right?
They could have been updated. That was references from.
They could've been updated. That was, um, references from earlier in the summer. They may have changed their rates. I think everything's on here. I don't have the old one in front of me, but these are, um, these are all the way up to Mackinac City, um, including Irish up in, uh,
So Pete, of these, which do you think is most comparable?
Well, we've got Harbor West across the street. That's not in here, but they're at one seventy-five, a dollar seventy-five current for last year. And comparable, uh, it's, the advantage of our storage is that our sailors can sail masked up and so it saves them from stepping and, and removal of the mast and um, we, like we talked about earlier regarding the location, uh, the wall space, that's kind of a premium anywhere you go. If you're in, uh, Northport, uh, Northport Marine, the bo- boatyard up there is three seventy-five a square foot. They do have service. That does not include anything other than that's where you'll pay for the, the footprint on the ground, as I understand it. And then, um, you know, they got a à la carte service where they're gonna lift your boat, winterize it, shrink wrap it, step, de-step the mast, that type of thing. So all that said, um, you know, I was surprised in some ways that we weren't severely below kind of neighbors like Harbor West. We're a little below. I ran some numbers at a dollar ninety-five, taking a forty foot boat with a twelve foot beam. Last year would've been seven sixty-eight if we went to a dollar ninety-five, which is a thirty-five cent per square foot. It goes to nine hundred and thirty-six from seven sixty-eight. So keep in mind that a small increase like thirty-five cents a square foot is, is more money, you know, because you're, you've got length times beam times your rate, so, um.
So, go ahead, Kyle.
I guess I kinda agree with Pete. I don't, last time I thought we had a couple of more numbers and I was thinking dollar eighty-five, dollar ninety-five is kinda where we should go. Cause I can tell you, like Northport, even the, the gentlemen from Great Lakes Sailing notes and if I, as I recall, it's three seventy-five, but that includes actually lifting your boat and putting it in their yard and power washing the boat. Unless they ch- have drastically changed how they build.
They have, they have.
Have they? Okay.
Yeah, the new owners have really jumped it up.
Okay, wow. I sent you that, that's for.
Yeah.
Three seventy-five. Um, so I, I personally, I think moving up to like a one ninety-five or a one eighty-five or a one ninety or somewhere just below two or, like, you know, I, I, you could get me up to two pretty easy, but somewhere around there seems to be, what would be, cause we don't offer any services.
You don't offer any services, but there are costs incurred by the marina.
Oh, yeah.
You know, so it is not just a taking up space and they're taking up some electricity, they're taking up cleaning, manpower, those kinds of things.
So is this the same for all boats stored at the marina then? Even the ones that they just pick out with the crane and plop over here versus the one they put on trailers and they park in a lot?
Yep.
It's all the same?
Now they pay somebody to take them, to take them. When they set them on the trailer, they pay somebody to move it for them, but it's not us.
Yeah, right.
Sometimes.
Same rate for location.
Correct.
Seems like the premium location is the once along the.
Pete and I just talked about that.
Yeah.
Maybe we could charge them, you know, five cents more or something.
Pete and I just talked about that today, actually. You know, maybe that's some, I don't know, is that something the board wants to look at?
Something in the future that needs to be looked at as the marina develops further and there's more demand on the marina. But you gotta start somewhere.
Right. Yeah, please, Dave.
I, I would say it would be reasonable to go to the two dollars a square foot. I mean, it is not a big jump. Again, we've headed since two thousand and five at one sixty. I talked to Harbor West and, uh, they're at the one seventy-five, but he's jumping it up also. He just was on vacation, so he, he didn't jump up his rates, but, um.
Okay.
It is a, it's a location that is very beneficial to all. So it, it's a win-win for everybody.
The other thing you may wanna consider is your minimum, which is, has been at the same rate since the other established at four hundred dollars minimum.
As, as someone who had a boat, uh, when I looked into it, hit the minimum, I, I mean, I guess I don't know. I get that maybe we have a minimum, but are, are we preventing people from, cause one thing we don't get anymore, which is part of the way we've changed the marina, but I thought when we used to let people just store their boats on trailers, we would get people who would just leave their boat there all year. Theoretically, there are people who want somewhere to leave their boat and where. Because we have a minimum, somebody with a twenty foot boat, they're not gonna come talk to us. They're gonna go to any one of these other guys.
Yeah.
And we've got space. So I don't, I, is, is it effectively that, hey, I guess why, why up the minimum?
It's not my recommendation necessarily, but just to consider, um, and we, I don't think we, we lose any, um, on that, at that current rate. And, uh, so it's totally up, up to you, but, um, just, just something to keep in mind. I mean.
Cause we've got, I think it looks like currently we've got not a lot of them, but nine boats who are hovering at the minimum, minimum as it is.
I'll support Dave's motion for two bucks.
Did you make a motion?
I guess I did, yeah. I made a motion for two dollars a square foot.
Leave them in at four hundred.
So we have a motion and we have support discussion?
I think that's a bit high all at once. I'd rather keep it at more of a ten to fifteen percent increase this year and maybe more next year. So I think that's about a close to twenty-five percent. That's my thought.
Yeah. Hasn't been raised since oh-five.
That's when I hired in. It was the same rate.
Yeah, so I mean, I, relative to the rest of them, other than Harbor West, will still be, you know, well within the ballpark, if not cheaper. And it sounds like Harbor West is gonna go up too, so. You got a motion? Support? Any other discussion before we do a vote?
The audience seems very interested.
Yeah, they'll, they'll have their opportunity. All right, uh, roll call vote, please, Connie.
Kyle Travis?
Yes.
Dave Darga?
Yes.
Terry Lautner?
Yes.
Jordan Gallagher?
Yes.
Chris Mikowski?
No.
And I vote no and Jeff Shaw.
Yes, motion passes. Thank you, Pete.
Okay.
Elmwood Leland Ar recycling agreement. Uh, so Trudy sent this over. We're due to renew our recycling agreement with, uh, the county. Yes. Yep. It's pretty much identical agreement, just the numbers have changed, I mean, the dates have changed.
It's going pretty well down there. I don't think as many items are being left on the sidewalk than.
Yeah.
Actually, it looks good.
Previously.
It looks good.
So interestingly, I did a little sign that said, if you leave anything on this sidewalk or anywhere on the ground, you will be ticketed. We haven't had one item left there since we put that next to the sidewalk.
That's very good.
So, and it's just a little laminated thing that I did up in here, printed it off.
That's very good. That's a good idea. I just needed to know. That was a good idea.
Yeah, so, who knows? I haven't looked behind to see if we're still doing metal recycling.
I just checked last week. It was empty.
Excellent. Man, it does look really good and it's, you know, it used to be every weekend, we had a bunch of stuff sitting on the sidewalk and people just needed to know that that's not okay.
Everything's doing well now.
Yeah, yeah, so. So, yeah.
So you need a motion to renew the, is it renewal or something for five years?
Yep.
I'd make that motion to renew it with the county.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Cherry Bend sidewalks tap grant application with Networks Northwest. Rob, thanks for being patient and.
My pleasure to be here. Thank you for having me.
Do you wanna?
I wanted to just provide a brief update on where we are currently. The township, Wade Trim and the Leland Ar County Road Commission are gonna hold a meeting here shortly, a follow-up meeting to initial meetings that we had to, um, figure out and determine a final design for the Cherry Bend Road Improvement. Following that design, there will be a, um, budget that will be developed for the improvements. Both of those are absolutely necessary for the tap application that would be drafted by Networks Northwest and will ultimately be undersigned by Leland Ar County Road Commission. The tap application deadlines are October eleventh, twenty twenty-three, or February twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. So we do have some leeway on when we can submit that application. We have been in consistent communication with MDOT and specifically Julie Gardner, who is the tap grant coordinator for our region. She will expect an application either in October, October or February. Once we submit that, we'll be in close communication with them, um, answer any additional questions they have and then hopefully we'll have a favorable outcome.
So, yep. So the design currently, the design that we're, we're hoping for is curb and gutter, which makes more room for the, for the trail.
Yes, it places the trail along the north side of the road, um, curb and gutter and, uh, shrinks the drive lanes down a little bit, making them a little narrower, which, uh, provides traffic calming. Just as a note, we do have, um, a couple of the, uh, requirements to be eligible for submission to a tap grant application. Letters of support from the Traverse City MDOT Service Center Office. We have obtained that letter of support. We've also obtained a letter of support from Tart Trails, specifically from Julie Clark. Um, and then as you see on your agenda this evening, there is a, um, complete streets resolution that we are asking the, the township to please adopt this evening. That is also a requirement, um, for any community, um, that is submitting to a tap application for an improvement in that community.
So you guys have questions for Rob or questions on all of this?
I just have a question about the sidewalk. How did, is the road itself going to be lowered a little bit? Cause I know on the north side of the road, driveways would end up all having to go up a bit.
So, Ken, uh, so, so I'll, yeah, I'll, I'll answer it from, from what I understand. If we do the curb and gutter, that gives us a lot more room and eliminates some of those ditches and.
That's it in a nutshell.
See?
By, by eliminating those shoulders, you gain a lot of existing road space. The physical lane you drive on may move, but in general, the road is going to be where it is. That gives us more room to grade out. I think there'll still be some challenges, but I think it's, it's doable.
I got a question for Ken. Can the, the containment basins underneath the road in the curb and gutter? How, how far do those run? Do they interconnect from one drain system to another? So you have to run double pipes down the length of the road or, I mean, I, it's a side view, so it's hard to know how much containment or drainage there's going to be.
So, uh, part of that will be determined by design. Uh, once you get an elevation, you can go so far based on grade.
Okay.
Before you have to find an outlet. Um, I'm, I'm gonna be honest with you. There's someone else in our office that is actually doing the road design. He's a former county road engineer. So he's, he's, uh, spearheading the design on that.
So we'll see all that in the future.
Exactly, exactly. You wanna minimize that as much as you can because that is expensive and it's ongoing maintenance. But, but those curbs will allow the project to, to have that ten foot trail in, in place. Otherwise you're just, there's lowering of the road and it becomes an immense project otherwise.
And it looks, to go with Connie's question, it looks like you're going to fill in part of the, the ditching to, on the north side of the road to compensate for the elevation for the, the path. The path is actually gonna cover the part of the ditch.
Yeah, if, if the ditches are no longer needed for the road drainage,
Right.
we would try to utilize as much of that right away as we can.
That's.
While, while minimizing disturbance along the frontage. So there's, there's always a balance. There will be disturbance. There's no question about that.
Yep.
Have we gotten much of a response from the community that's gonna lose?
There's, well, there's, you know, there's a few people on Cherry Bend Road that I've spoken to that, um, are a little resistant to it, um, but they lived on the south side, so now that it's gonna be on the north side, they probably won't care. No, I mean, I, I, I'm serious. The little lady that was standing in her jammies chewing me out in her, in her driveway. When I left, the last thing she said, well, actually if it's on the other side, I don't care. Honest to God, that's, those were her last words to me.
Okay.
So she was mostly worried about her sprinklers.
Looks like it's gonna be a big improvement.
It could, yeah.
Houses on the, on that side, I don't think that we have anybody who's got like a crazy existing setback. But like all of them seem to be decently removed from the roads, so it's not like we're gonna be trying to tell anybody, here, move your porch, or by the way, this sidewalk's gonna be a foot off your porch.
Right, right. Well, there's a lot of advantages for it to stay on the north side.
Right.
Not be crossing over like we were trying to work. If we didn't do curb and gutter, that's kinda what it would end up being, I think. I'm not an engineer, but, so.
So how, oh, go, you know, how wide is a sidewalk? Like a standard sidewalk, Tom, is that four feet?
Typical sidewalks, five feet.
Four, five feet is what a regular sidewalk is? Do we really need ten feet?
For a, for a multi-purpose trail, that is typically what you look for. That's a standard width.
And I believe that's required with the tap.
That is, that is partially required with the tap. You can do sidewalks, but the purpose is the, um, Tart Trail, when the M twenty-two reconstruction occurs, is gonna be a ten foot pathway terminating at Cherry Bend Road. So the continuation of that pathway and then connecting to the Leland Ar Trail will keep that entire road, uh, route harmonious along the, along its length.
And then, uh, other question is, so it's a two inch curb and not a four inch or five inch curb like we see on a city street? Is that what I'm seeing here or?
I'm not sure. I think that should be a standard curb section.
I thought it's a two inch, two foot, two inch curb. Oh wait, two foot.
Two foot curb.
Two foot curb. Okay, so that's the concrete and then, uh, curb.
That's the width.
So there's no, no place if you have a disabled vehicle to get off the road then?
That's correct. It's a, like a city street without, without shoulders.
Without parking on the side.
Correct.
So we've got a kind of a main drag there, no place to get off if you got a disabled vehicle. To me, that's a problem.
I can certainly bring that up with, with the engineer and get his take on that.
The curb, do the, do the curbs have to be that high? Is what I'm saying. You know, if you had a, if you had a two inch curb or something, you know, just a little bump, you knew where the road was, but you could always, you know, bump up on the curb and get up on the grass between the curb and the trailer, sidewalk. There's five feet of grass there.
So there are, there are multiple curbs?
You could.
You know, that's, it's rolled up, it's still bump, but you can roll a tire up on it fairly easily.
Yeah.
So these are things that we should, that I'll. So these are things that we should, that I'll make note of. When we sit down with the road commission, they'll have input on this as well. So that's certainly something I can bring up with them.
Because I surely wouldn't want a curb that's, you know, perpendicular to the road surface.
Right.
You know, that.
Yeah, I understand exactly what you're saying.
You've got no way to get off of it if you have to. Especially on the south side, you know, because there's no sidewalk over there. Be easy if you had a disabled vehicle, you know, to get off the road. Should be able to, you know. Not encourage it, but if you have a problem.
I think a decent curb, though, will keep someone from distracted driving and rolling up onto the trail.
You do want the vertical side operation at some point.
Yeah.
It is part of the safety.
You know, the other thing in that area is there's so many side streets and so many driveways. Me, if I had a car that shut down, I'd even pull into somebody's driveway. You can always get towed, but at least you're off the main road. But I think Terry's right. You don't want to see a, like along the bay where you have this harsh curb that you go to hit the curb and you're going to take the wheel off, you know, or something like that.
Yeah, so I know there are roadway standards, and we'll look at those and weigh the options and benefits of them.
To go back to, I think it was your question, Dave. The vast majority of people that I've spoken to, not necessarily people who live on Cherry Bend Road, but there's an overwhelming support for this, like this really needs to be done.
I think it'll be well-used.
Well, yeah, I mean, if you drive down Cherry Bend any day in the summer, you'll see people walking, walking their dogs, all that kind of stuff on the shoulder. Yeah. And I was talking about Jean Skipski, God bless her, because she's gone, but, you know, she was ninety-two, walking on the side of Cherry Bend Road. God, you know, she doesn't have a safe place to walk, so.
It connects everything.
Yeah. And it's part of our master plan. Sarah Claren and I have talked about that. It connects our parks, which is a big part of what we wanted to do with non-motorized transportation, so.
So another question.
Yeah.
So you got the six-foot here in the middle, is that the, the road is going to shift six feet one direction? Is that what that means, or what is that?
Yeah, that does show the shift of where you will actually drive will be six feet.
The center line will be six feet?
Correct. That just gives you space. You're moving the road to one side to give you space and the trail on the other.
Yeah, okay.
And is it, I mean, like, imagine it'd be reasonable to have, like, on the trail side, like a harsh curb like there is on the bay shore, and then maybe on the non-trail side, like a, like we have on M twenty-two, where it's kind of a, it's not really encouraging you to drive over it, but it's also like.
Right, it's not a full barrier.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's called a mountable curb. So that, yes, these are all things we'll discuss with the design engineer on this.
How much is available per grant?
How much is available per grant?
Yeah, like, how much is, what's the maximum you can?
Well, the minimum is two hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
Ask. I'll be honest with you, you're not going to hit the maximum, and I didn't check what that is, because it's up there. It's an eighty, twenty percent required match, forty percent is desire to give greater eligibility. The grant will cover the aspects that relate to the non-motorized portion. I have some questions for the grant coordinator in terms of the realignment of the road and the costs that will come into play with that, if that is also potentially reimbursable under the grant, so I'm going to figure that out as well.
And Carl Ferguson is already out there looking for more grants that could help us out with this. These guys are all looking for it, so, you know, hopefully we can find more money as we go to help us with this, more grants. Non-motorized transportation is a big, you know, there's a lot of money out there for that right now, so it'd be great if we could tap into some more of that, no pun intended. Sorry. Anybody else have questions? Any thoughts? Anything you want these guys to look at?
Just a quick question. You've got a two-foot shoulder on the north side of the trail there. What's, what's that? Is that gravel, or?
Um.
Why wouldn't that be grass?
That would probably be grass.
Okay.
But it's just, it's just required you have to have somewhat of a level surface off the side of it, so it's a little fall right off the edge.
Right.
Anybody else have questions for Ken or for Rob? You didn't need any sort of motion for us on this, did you?
No, not at all.
You're good. This is just informational.
This is just informational.
Thank you.
Nope, I'll come to you prior to your submission of the application.
Perfect. Perfect. Thank you. Yes, yeah, that'll be next. Complete Streets Resolution. Rob, you want to stay up there?
Yes, sir.
Ken, thank you. So we tweaked it just a little bit, took out three words, referring to the narrow roads. Other than that, this came from MDOT.
Yes, this is a template resolution that MDOT provides for complete streets. We actually reached out to MDOT's North Region Transportation Planner today to ensure that removing those words wouldn't impact the, the purpose of the resolution, and MDOT accepting that when the tap grant is submitted. And there's absolutely no issue with that. They are comfortable since the resolution speaks to complete streets.
I'm going to adapt Resolution fifteen of twenty twenty-three. Complete Streets Resolution.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Discussion? Roll call vote, please, Connie.
I'll vote yes. Chris McCosky?
Yes.
Jordan Gallagher?
Yes.
Terry Lautner?
Yes.
Dave Darga?
Yes.
Kyle Travis?
Yes.
Jeff Shaw?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob, for your help.
My pleasure.
We appreciate it.
My pleasure, certainly.
Thank you. Item eleven, payment of invoices.
Make a motion to pay the invoices in the amount of thirty-two thousand, four hundred and nine dollars and twenty-six cents.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion about the invoices? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Now, it's time for extended public comment. It is six fifty-seven, and I would like to open up public comment. Same rules, you have three minutes. If you don't mind giving us your name and address, we'd appreciate it, and addressed your comments directly to the board. Lynda, did you want to start us off? Come on up, absolutely. You were absolutely fine.
By the way, I'm really impressed with the way you guys do this. Really congenial and efficient and well-run. Thank you.
We were just putting on a show for you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Okay, so I think that what I, where I stopped was that I'd been through all of the documents, all of the governing documents about the management of firearms, and there's no mention of discharging them in an urban area anywhere. So, along the way, while I was making, doing this other research, I came across some surprising statistics. It really kind of sobered me up. Not that I was wrong, but I learned that from two thousand to two thousand and twenty, there have been thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and eighty children under the age of eighteen who were killed by firearms. I'm flat shocked by that. That's what is it, five times the population of this township? I'm just amazed. Further, gun violence is now the leading cause of death in children. Bar none, the leading cause. So, there's not a lot that can be done about that. I know that the Second Amendment is a very important thing, but I do believe that there's some minor things that we can do that can take those numbers down. And what I think that we might be able to do is take some steps to limit the discharging of firearms to areas that are not urban. There, I can't see a reason for us to need to discharge firearms in an urban area, and it may do something to bring up the awareness of the population a bit, how, how, what a tremendous impact it has had on our youth. So, if we could do that in this township, maybe we can make it go further. And I'd just like to say that I'd like to have your help, and maybe we can put this together and make it happen on an even grander scale. So, there you have it. I'm not sure what the next steps are, but I would appreciate your assistance with it. I don't think it impairs or impinges on anybody's right to carry or anything like that, but it just makes it safer, especially for our kids. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. What a good job you guys did.
Thanks. And send me an email and we will communicate.
Okay, I'll do that.
Thank you. Dave, come on up.
Hi, I'm Dave Conrad, seventeen oh four Comanche Street, Traverse City. I have a Great Lakes Sailing Company, and we manage, we have a charter fleet, but we manage thirty-six boats for individuals. That means we oversee hauling, storage, all that stuff that goes with the boat. So I just wanted to add a few things about the marina rates and then the redesign of the marina. First off, is like, we spend a lot of money with the township for boat storage, and I'm shooting myself in the foot, but I do agree that the rates probably need to go up a little, it has been a while, so I'm okay with that. That's not really what my point is here. The, but there are some things to really consider, because the, and this could go on more than these three minutes here, so. The, but I'll cut it off. The mainly is that, like storing with, you know, apples to apples, like you said, it's hard to find an apples to apples comparison. So when you're storing with Harbor West Yacht Services, that also requires the mass comes down. So a mass down, a mass back up, you can add about eight hundred to a thousand bucks a year on top of that. So keeping storage, you know, somewhat reasonable is important, because you got to throw that on top of it. So, Dave, you know that, I mean, I'm sure you write a novel on that stuff. The, we haul and store everywhere from Boyne City, Northport, you know, Jefferson Beach Marina Detroit, so I have spreadsheets of all this stuff, because we're trying to tell our clients what they're spending their money on. And at Elmwood Township, when you haul a boat, the boats that have that right up front along the wall, they have a premium spot, because they can just take advantage of the swing arm of the crane. So that drops the boats and then they're done. But a majority of the boats have to go to the back of the lot, and we were paying premier, three hundred and fifty dollars a boat, to move a boat in the, in the fall, three fifty, to move it to the back of the lot, and another three fifty, move it to the front of the lot, and then you've got the crane on top of that, and the storage on top of that, and, you know, so it does add up. You know, especially in adding seven hundred dollars per boat, just to move it. So for the folks that can't store along the wall, that's what they're paying to go to the back of the lot, and there's just no way around it. Jim got out of the business because sailboats are a pain, and we ended up buying his equipment. Now I'm in the business, and I, I mean, it is pain, so. So the, yeah, I mean, again, shooting myself in the foot, but it is, you know, it is a, just to be honest with you, that's a lot to have to, you know, to move these boats around. So the other thing is, is that the redesign of the marina, you know, it sounds, it's good, it sounds like we're going to take a little time and look at that again about, you know, moving the building forward, because raising the rates, increasing revenues doesn't really help a lot if you eliminate a big portion of the boats that can get hauled. So it doesn't sound like any changes are being made to the north side of the seawall, but the problem there is if we banked on that area only, as soon as those boats get hauled there, there's no crane that can move in. So you've got to keep in mind that if, if we're just banking on the north side of that seawall to be the hauling area, well, all hauling is done as soon as those boats get hauled. So the south side needs a little bit of room for a crane and a semi truck to move in.
Okay, thanks, Dave.
Cool, thanks.
We're definitely going to look at that, so I think, I think we can come to a resolution that's going to be good for everybody. So, thank you. Any other public comment? Eric?
Eric Curran, one oh two one two East Cherry Bend Road. I just wanted to thank the board for looking at other options besides the very, very expensive marina upgrade phase three that was proposed earlier. Thank you for the consideration of possibly saving hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars. And, you know, twelve hundred dollars per slip holder amortized over twenty years is a lot to play, pay for a clubhouse that would have very little use. So, once again, thank you. Thank you very much for looking at other opportunities. Also, on the Cherry Bend Road, for what it's worth, a new culvert's needed on the creek by our house. So hopefully that goes in the, in the plans. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. We appreciate your support, and I think a new culvert would be part of that project, so I think they'll be looking at all that, so. Other public comment at this point? So it is seven oh five, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.